All right, as Mayor, I call this electronic communications meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being convened with City Council members using the Zoom platform, broadcast over the city's cable channel, and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council at this time to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Doll.
Uh, here.
Ms. Oaks. Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Dr. Harrington.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
Dr. Curran.
Here.
Unneeded.
All are present.
Thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg now identify his location and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location, and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. This is City Manager Steve Rosenberg. I am participating in the meeting using the Zoom platform from my residence in Stanton. There is no one with me at this location. Also participating in the meeting are Faith Simmons, Clerk of Council, Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, Doug Nguyen, City Attorney, Phil Treier, Chief Finance Officer, Billy Vaughn, Director of Community Development and Economic Development, Rodney Rhodes, Senior Planner, Zach Henry, Systems Engineer, and finally also participating on the Zoom platform are Deneen Brannick, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and Frank Strassler, the Executive Director of Historic Stanton Foundation.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that in calling this meeting notice, reasonable under the circumstances that this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice by memorandum provided to members of council. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During matters from the public on council's agenda toward the end of council's meeting, public comments will be taken. Members of the public who wish to participate in matters from the public at the appropriate time may call 844-854-2222 and follow the prerecorded prompts to ask a question. The public is reminded that though the prerecorded prompts refer to questions, matters from the public is a time for council simply to listen to your remarks. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www.c i.stanton.v a.us forward slash government forward slash city hyphen council. In addition, there are two public hearings on the agenda, one concerning water user fees and the other concerning refuse rates. They were continued or deferred previously from council's meeting on March 26th to tonight's meeting. Let me clarify that these two public hearings are on the agenda for this meeting simply to allow council to again continue or defer them to council's regular meeting on April 23rd as recommended by the city manager. No public comment will be received on those two items tonight. The public hearings will be held and public comment will be received on April 23rd. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council Ordinance 2020 dash oh four regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us forward slash C O G O R D 2020 hyphen zero four. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each and every time when speaking so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of City Council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may take note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return so it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker may not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We will take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about the process. Council members, do you have any questions about that?
No.
No.
No, I'm not.
All right. Not hearing any questions at this time, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the invocation moment of silence, and it happens to be my turn this this meeting. I would like for us to have a moment of silence for the over 16,000 deaths that have occurred so far from the COVID-19 virus. It is so tragic that these lives have been lost and that families, friends, and the communities are not even allowed to grieve them in in traditional ways because of the circumstances, but they are all they all had value as people and had worth, and so I would like a moment of silence, please. Next, next is the mayor's report. I would like to just briefly thank all the city employees for the great job that they're doing during this crisis, and as well, a big thanks to Dr. Carnegie and the Health Department staff who have been outstanding, to our regional hospital Augusta Health, who has prepared mightily for for the impending pressure on their resources and are prepared to handle it. And then last but not least, the citizens of Stanton who have done such a good job in following the recommendations for the situation we're in right now. At this time, I would ask if there are any additional items by members of council.
Madam Madam Mayor, if I may for one moment.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg, if I could just ask that Ms. Simmons would note that at 7:40 PM, Vice Mayor Keir joined the meeting.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Ophi.
It's been it's been noted.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And welcome, Vice Mayor Keir. So are there any additional items by members of council? And and I suppose we could just run down the list, so I'll I'll see if Vice Mayor Keir has anything.
I do not.
All right, Mr. Holmes.
No, ma'am.
Ms. Mead.
I have nothing.
Ms. Oaks.
Nothing to add.
Thanks. Dr. Harrington.
Nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll we can move on now to the approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of March 12th, 2020. You've had an opportunity to review them, and I would entertain a motion regarding them at this time. Mayor Doll. I heard two voices.
This is Andrea.
Ms. Oaks.
Mayor Doll, I'd like to make a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of March 12th, 2020.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I would like to, I wasn't at the last meeting, so excuse myself from the vote.
All right, so we'll have one abstention. Any other discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keir.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And I'll just point out at this time that for particularly for the public who may be listening, this meeting is actually a combination of a work session and a regular meeting. We didn't, we just combined everything that would have been maybe into separate sessions into one. So at this time, I will call on Mr. Rosenberg regarding the consideration of the regular meeting agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of council. In the normal course, you would have typically acted on your agendas during the work session. Without the without a work session, we've arrived at the time in your meeting where it would be appropriate for you to act on your agenda for the regular meeting. And I would I would note two things for you. First of all, the agenda briefing, which has the form motion, refers to both the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda, whichever one of you chooses to make or to offer a motion to approve the agenda need only refer to the regular meeting agenda. And I would remind you that you have a revised agenda, so in making the motion, the maker would want to move to adopt the revised regular meeting agenda as presented. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion regarding our agenda.
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Mead.
I move to approve the revised regular meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keir.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Upstaying.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item B is the FY 2021 budget update, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of council, on March 26th, I presented to you the proposed FY 2021 budget, and as was noted at that time, we knew that it would be necessary to deal with the consequences of the crisis in which we find ourselves. For the last couple of weeks, Leslie Beauregard and Phil Treier have been diligently on reworking not only the proposed FY 2021 budget, but also focusing their attention on the last quarter of the current fiscal year. So in a moment, I'm going to ask Mr. Treier to present the work that has been accomplished over the last two weeks and give you a sense of where we find ourselves today. First, I want to note for the public listening, well, first, first, let me say to members of council that in a moment, your screen will shift and you will have a PowerPoint presentation from which Mr. Treier will be working, and Ms. Beauregard will be running the PowerPoint presentation during Mr. Treier's presentation. For the public listening, the PowerPoint presentation has been posted and is available on the city's website at www.c i.stanton.v a.us forward slash budget, and there is a PDF file at that site that contains the same slides, which will be shown to council now. My final note, again, to reiterate, although on the agenda, we indicated FY 2021 budget update, Mr. Treier's presentation will concern not only FY 2021, but also the remaining quarter of FY 2020. And with that, I will ask Mr. Treier to make his presentation.
Very good. Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here. Tonight, we are here to report on our FY 2020 revised projections, as well as to discuss our FY 2021 revised budget path. As reported at our March 18, 2020 meeting, local revenues were well ahead of previous benchmarks. Sales tax revenues at the time were $219,000 over same time last year, meals tax $240,000, lodging tax 148, our personal property taxes were more than $200,000 over budget, and our real estate taxes were expected to be at budgetary levels. Since reporting these numbers, the full impact of the economic downturn has become clear. For the period of March through June 2020, we are projecting sales tax to be just 60% prior year actuals, meals tax 33% of prior year actuals, transient occupancy tax just 25% of prior year actuals. We've also applied a delinquency factor of 5% to the collection that is due on June 20th, 2020. That's a $13.5 million expected recovery of income, and we project that to be down roughly $675,000. We also expect prior year delinquencies to be impacted as well. As a result of the economic contraction, the FY 20 general fund revenues are now projected to be down $2.6 million less than budget. As a comparison, Jim Reganball, the fiscal analytics, has projected a revenue shortfall for the city of Stanton, $2,015,000. The difference is primarily associated with adding the delinquency factor to the real estate due at the end of June. In response to this revenue shortfall, our city manager froze open position and cut all but necessary expenditures. This is resulting in expected savings of roughly $1.5 million. At this point, just just want to mention, we we do expect, we are planning on the full local transfer of $13.8 million going to the school, so none of the savings are at the school's expense. This late in the fiscal year, we have very few alternatives that the city can can initiate. Two such plan moves, one, the suspension of pool summer league and summer camp activities till July 1st, with it was with the governor shutdown of June 10th, it's going to take a few weeks to ramp up, and hopefully, we're going to have these things running by 4th of July. Second, we propose to pull from several CIP reserves, which have previously been appropriated. This option would require a budget amendment to transfer funds from the CIP fund into the general fund. The budget amendment is to be introduced at April 23rd's meeting for consideration by council on May 14th. The CIP projects affected include the jail expansion, $500,000, police radio reserve of $400,000, and provisions to support the high school debt of $500,000. This budget amendment would bring total adjustments up to $2.9 million, which exceeds our shortfall by $300,000 and should allow for potential slippage if the revenues are worse than projected. That is our plan for FY 20, our projections for FY 20. FY 21, the first slide is just to 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 show the impact, the the challenges that we had before the virus. We had year-on-year budget adjustments of $1.6 million, some big-ticket items, VRS, which you've heard about, was 233, jail operations was $450,000, we had some developmental agreements of 310, and and several other adjustments in there, all told, $1.6 million, about half of that was unforeseen. The revenue impact, since the virus has has occurred, is very similar to what we're seeing in FY 20. Again, we've applied a delinquency provision to real estate tax, 5%, personal property tax, 4%, smaller bills, meals tax, we are projecting 25% reduction for the year compared to the original budget, lodging 20% reduction compared to 20% reduction compared to the original budget, business license 25% reduction, and sales tax 25% reduction. All told, we're looking at this point, a $4.2 million reduction versus our original Naturally, with revenue reductions, with revenue reductions, we're going to, we're going to have to find some expense reductions as well. Right now, we have the elimination of the 2% pay increase that was scheduled to to go into effect on January 1st, the school transfer reduction of $1.7 million. This is per the established formula that's been in use for years. And and finally, the deferral of FY 20 CIP expenditures, which are embedded into the original FY 21 operating budget, and that amounts to $941,000. Total estimated reductions from those three items is $2.8 million, which leaves us a funding gap of $1.4 million. Not a lot of easy ways to eliminate this gap of the $60.9 million original general fund budget, salaries and benefits accounted for 36% of it, contractual obligations, debt service, school transfers, CIP transfers, and non-controllable expenditures accounted for 57% of that total, which leaves 7% to cover expenses such as vehicle repairs, vehicle replacements, building maintenance, uniforms, telephone, and professional services. When we were putting together budget assumptions, one thing that we did not do was was to incorporate the safety net reserves into our strategy. Our strategy is to make difficult decisions upfront and to only use the safety net reserve in the event revenues in FY 21 are significantly below estimates, which would potentially disrupt our core services. Secondly, the city plans to continue to freeze open positions with limited exceptions approved by the city manager. This should allow for a natural contraction of departmental structure and should help the city to adjust to any potential revenue shortfalls that it may experience during the course of the fiscal year. Other considerations, these estimates are are really guesses. We have, we have little to note, no data to to pull from. First data that's going to become available is when the March sales tax returns are filed, so so we'll have access to those on April 21st. And that's only only part of a month because the first week or so was was actually semi-normal. We also have to take into consideration by state statute, the city must adopt a budget for the schools no later than May 15th. Given the uncertainty of everything, we're we're really kind of flying a little blind here. Our intention to provide for appropriation at the May 14th meeting of 50% for the schools and 50% for the city. A subsequent appropriation will occur later in the fall when when the revenue picture Again, the revenue forecasts are hampered significantly by uncertainty. Revenue estimates were made in conjunction with the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer as a point of reference. Again, the city's Dan's projection, 21 shortfall is within $30,000 of Jim Reganball's 21 projection for our city. So we're we're, we had two different paths, but we came up with roughly the same number. And again, these are estimates. These estimates are going to change as the year unfolds, and as 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 the estimates change and and reality takes hold, we will adjust either upwards or downwards during the course of FY 21. And that's all that I have at this time. I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg. If I may, just to add to stress a point that Mr. Treier, that was implicit, I think, in Mr. Treier's presentation, when talking about the remaining gap for FY 2021, and he noted that salaries and benefits account for 36% of the total general fund budget, contractual obligations and non-controllable expenditures account for 57%, and then there was the remaining 7% to cover other miscellaneous expenses. Those are areas in which we will be looking over the course of the next week to identify actions that might be taken to to close that $1.4 million gap. And I anticipate at this point that when we meet with council next Thursday for your work session at 5:30 on Thursday, the 16th, that we will have more information to share with you about how we propose to close that gap.
All right, thank you for that, and thanks to Mr. Treier and the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer and all the staff that have worked on analyzing this data and coming up with what we see now as some methods for dealing with the shortfall. It it looks, it looks doable. It's not great, but doable. Council members, let me get down through and see if anybody has questions at this time. Vice Mayor Keir.
Yes, I do. For Mr. Treier.
Yes, sir.
Throughout the year, every year, we have, I'll call them unforeseen funds come into where we're allowed to place those funds in different pots, if you will. If we're looking at payroll being cut or the the 2% increases not being there, would it be possible during the year, when we do have those appropriations come in, to make adjustments to payroll, or does that have to be done annually?
We can do that via budget adjustments throughout the year, and as they come available, I will bring those to council's attention at the very next meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Holmes, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor Doll. Phil, I've got a couple of questions. I'm just looking at what my, how my business has been doing the last three weeks, and we're averaging between 15 and 18% of what our normal sales would be. So I just think that I I was wondering, it seemed like that might what you're saying might be a little low. might be a little low to me. I don't know if we're making it up in sales tax, because everybody's going to the grocery store and to Lowe's and places like that. But, you know, I know the hotels are really flat. I mean, Hampton, they closed the top floor down. And there are actually discussions about possibly closing down, you know, and furloughing their help. So I don't know that we can count much on meals tax and room tax, at least until they give us the go-to-go, they let us see people inside again.
As far as the meals tax, we know that we're seeing a little bit more elevated activities in some of the drive-throughs. This really is an estimate, and I really am going blind. We're going to make the adjustments and as we proceed through the months. I'm hoping that by June, maybe we start to see some lifting of the sanctions and perhaps there's going to be some pent-up demand. FY '21 is for the whole year. I don't know whether or not that's a good number or a bad number. It seems to be in conjunction with Jim Regan Ball. These were numbers that we came up prior to seeing his numbers. So we were both kind of on the same page, actually. It really is a guessing game. I have no data. That's the first data I've heard from a restaurant owner. And it's probably a little more than what I thought that you might have had, so.
Well, I've been checking it, you know, against last year's sales and stuff. Just for the month of March. And I had two good weeks before that. We were down $105,000 in sales. So my meals tax will be... I paid $14,000 in meals tax for February. And I don't think it's going to be even four for March. I'm not sure. I know some of the drive-thrus are doing much better. Wright's had their best therapy. I don't know, I think it was last weekend. So they're doing really well, so.
I've been there a couple of times, yes.
Well, I'm going to put some of those speakers out in front of my place, so you can just pull up.
Okay.
They will be on city property.
I'll make sure to stop by, sir.
All right, Ms. Mead, do you have any questions?
Yes, a question for Mr. Chair. What was your assumption of the property tax rate in the numbers that you just provided us?
Right now, we do have it at the original amount. If we were to back that, I mean, the original budget amount of 97 cents. I apologize for that. If we were to back that out, we could handle it. It would be equally divided between the city and the schools. It'd be about $200,000 apiece.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Oaks, do you have any questions?
Yes, this question is for Steve. Mr. Rosenberg, even though it's claimed that there is a hiring freeze, you have the discretion of being able to hire when you see fit. What situation would you feel would be warranted to hire someone and for what position?
Ms. Oaks, I don't have a specific position that I can identify for you. What I can tell you is that as vacancies occur, we will determine how critical those positions are to our operation and make a decision on that basis with the input of the affected department.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Curran, do you have questions?
I do, from Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to the lodging and the meals tax. I know this is unprecedented situation. It's a lot of guesswork. And I think, I remember that Jim Regan Ball's numbers are very similar to yours. But one way they stood out was, I think, for fiscal year 2021, Jim Regan Ball had both transient occupancy and meals tax down 25%. But I think you only had transient occupancy down 20%.
Yeah.
And I know Terry was talking about how badly the restaurants are doing, the ones that aren't Wright's. But from what I know, it's more than just the Hampton Inn that's closed a floor. I think the Blackburn is entirely closed until May 1st. And I think some B&amp;Bs are totally closed. So I wonder, do you think lodging is going to... I would think restaurants would come back quicker than lodging.
My assumption there was some of the new inventory right on the interstate may overperform. And that's why there's a difference, a 5% difference.
Do you have anything else, Dr. Curran?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, Dr. Harrington?
Yes, ma'am. I had three questions, and two of them are about the city contribution to the school budget. And the chart that this is based on is now gone from my view. So I'm not sure I remember the numbers exactly right. But am I correct that there was a $1.3 or a $1.6 million reduction in the amount of transferred funds?
Yes, sir.
From the schools? And is that sort of the traditional divvying up the excess revenue and half goes to the schools that we've been doing for about 25 years?
Yeah, that is strictly by the traditional Gene Colvin funding formula. And that's her spreadsheet in use. And I adjusted those numbers, and that was the outcome.
Okay, and so the reason we're not dividing it with the school system is that it's not there to divide, right?
True. We sort of do a 50-50 with that formula. And so we're down X number, twice that amount, if you will. And then they receive 50% reduction of that. So we're down twice that amount.
Okay.
Yep.
And then there was a $500,000 reduction in something related to the high school building project?
Yeah. Yes, sir. We had had a... Gene Colvin had put some time ago a debt service provision within the CIP fund to help bolster debt service for the high school. Only $400,000 of that has been used. That was not for the high school, per se. It was for debt service associated with it. And I have taken that reserve. The high school is fully funded as council had voted for last year.
So it's not going to slow down the project or complicate the work that's going on?
That was never part of the project. It was for debt service.
Right, okay, thanks. And my third question, and this may be addressed at some other point in our conversations together tonight. But the federal money that is filtering through state governments to help people deal with the coronavirus, I'm assuming sooner or later, some of that will get to cities, right? Do we have any clue as to what kind of help we might get from state or federal sources that would help in any of these calculations?
We are awaiting guidance. And particularly, I'm very concerned about school funding. I was on the phone with the VDOE Budget Director yesterday trying to extract some information. And what I was told is that they expect to have some guidance posted, both state and federal funding, within the next week, week and a half. As far as funding for the city, I do not have any guidance on that at this time. We're still trying to make sure that we fully understand what individual employees might receive, so.
Good, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rosenberg.
If I can just add to the answer by Mr. Chair on funds flowing to the city. We did learn, I believe, earlier this week from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that the city would receive an additional, I believe, order of $1 million in community development block grant funds that could be used for targeted relief to assist particular populations in the city. And Mr. Vaughn is working with the city's CDBG consultant in order to develop a plan for the use of those funds consistent with the requirements from HUD. So that really is sort of the first concrete information that we have received about funds coming to the city specifically related to relief in responding to the pandemic.
And if I could, Dr. Harrington, I can tell you that I was on a conference call with Senator Warner. And he talked about the $3.3 billion that was in the bill for state and local governments. If a population was high enough, which it was Fairfax County had a high enough, it had to be over 500,000, their money went directly to them from the feds. So they got about half of this money. The other half will go to the state. And so the state will decide. And he said it could be the state will use it to balance their budget, to help that. And so it may be trickled down. Maybe they won't cut our 599 as much as they would have. Or maybe they won't cut the school funds as much as they would have and use this to supplement it. But it didn't sound real hopeful that that money would actually come as a separate pot through the state to us. But we'll have to see. When the General Assembly meets, we'll know more then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so that's it for the update until next week.
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Mead.
Yes, I would like to ask, who is going to be advocating for the city of Stanton with the General Assembly or with the governor's office to make sure that we get our fair share of these federal funds?
Does anybody have an answer for that? Because I don't.
I think...
I know VML will probably be advocating for all the localities to get, have some of that money directly sent to them. That's my guess, anyway.
I think at the present time, Madam Mayor, we're waiting to see what develops at the state level. Watching for guidance from VML and from Virginia First Cities. And I don't think we yet have a sense of any concrete proposals. But we're keeping our eye on it and will make the appropriate contacts when we have a sense of how this is unfolding.
And it's my understanding that the House is looking at another bill, although it's far from being settled, but to add some additional money for local governments and for hospitals. So maybe something will come further down the line. Okay, does anyone else have any comments or questions on that?
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Oaks.
Councilman, or Dr. Harrington, pardon me, had asked about the CDBG fund. I can say, as far as the CSVG, the Community Service Block Grants, were expected through the Community Action Partnership for Stanton, Augusta County, Waynesboro, to receive 130% more than what we had originally received for emergency services, as well as being able to help the community on the road. So that's good news.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item C, which is the continuation of the public hearing of an ordinance to increase water user fee public hearing. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just note for council that at your last meeting on March 26th, council opened the public hearing and continued it to today. With the revised budget schedule that we've provided to you, we now recommend that the public hearing be continued again to council's meeting on April 23rd. This would be the same date as the public hearing on the budget ordinance. And in your agenda briefing, you have the appropriate motion. And I would assure council that we will widely publicize the date of the continued hearing.
All right, thank you. Council members, are there any questions? And this is the same information that we've gone over before. And the purpose of it now is basically to have a motion to continue this yet again until April 23rd. So if there are no other questions about it, I would entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor Doll. Jim Harrington.
Dr. Harrington.
I move to continue the public hearing on the proposed ordinance to increase water user fees by 5% effective July 1st, 2020 to April 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to item D, which is a continuation of the public hearing of an ordinance to increase refuse and recycling rates. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is in the same posture as the preceding item, where the public hearing was opened at your last meeting and continued to tonight. And again, we recommend that it be further continued to council's meeting on April 23rd. And the proposed motion in your agenda briefing provides for that action.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions on this from council members? Although it's the same purpose as the last one, just to continue this public hearing to April 23rd. If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion?
Mayor Doll.
Dr. Harrington?
I move to continue the public hearing on the proposed ordinance to increase refuse and recycling rates by 5% effective July 1st, 2020 to April 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item E is an update concerning solar panels in historic districts. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor and members of council, this item arises out of discussions amongst council last year, coming out of council's consideration of an appeal, of a decision from the Historic Preservation Commission. The item that was the subject of the appeal concerned the installation of solar panels. And subsequent to that matter, at a work session of council, there was further discussion amongst council about... amongst council about the standards that govern the installation of solar panels in historic districts. And that further discussion occurred, council's work session on November 14th of 2019. And since that time, staff has been looking at several issues related to the installation of historic panels, I'm sorry, of solar panels in historic districts. And Rodney Rhodes, the city senior planner, has prepared this evening to share with you the results of the further research that he has completed. And he has asked Frank Strassler with Historic Preservation Foundation and Denise Brannick, the Chair of Historic Preservation Commission, to join this evening to be available, to contribute their thoughts and to assist with responding to any questions that council members may have. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Rhodes to share the results of his study with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. I will quickly summarize our findings and then hand it off to the two experts for their input and to answer any questions that council may have. First, there are no plans for the National Park Service to review or update the Department of Interior standards on solar facilities. Also, through our research, we did not find any other solar products that would be more acceptable under the current city and federal guidelines. We were also not able to find any localities, either in the state or in the nation, that have federally recognized historic districts that are deviating from these standards. The localities are consistent in discouraging the installation of solar panels on primary elevations or in areas with high visibility from a public street. I would note that the city and the commission have been supportive of alternative energy installations on historic properties when they meet these guidelines. And in the past four, five years, there have been four applications that have been approved. Three of those were on commercial properties, and one was for a single-family residence. I would also note that the preservation and maintenance of historic structures is fundamentally a very green initiative. And in conclusion, the commission and the city will continue to encourage and approve alternative energy installations that adhere to the adopted city guidelines and the Department of Interior standards. And at this time, I would like to hand it off to Frank Strassler, the Executive Director of the Stanton Foundation, who also reviews and makes recommendations on all applications before they come before the commission.
Good evening, members of council.
Oh, Frank.
Hi, Frank.
Hi, Frank.
Good evening.
This is a fun way of meeting. I believe that the planning staff did a very good job putting together their report and calling other communities and comparing guidelines. I believe the Stanton guidelines are supportive of solar installations and alternative energy. But the key is not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, not giving up on the historic architecture or the character of the community for one technology or a team of technologies. Historic preservation is inherently green, and a great deal of energy can be saved in a good proved energy strategy is weatherization, carefully designed weatherization. I entertain any questions you may have.
Council members, are there any questions at this time? I don't think there's any questions.
Thanks for the study.
Did Ms. Brannick want to speak?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council.
Welcome.
I just want to reiterate what Frank said, as well as Mr. Rhodes, and express on behalf of the commission, our appreciation to the planning department staff for exploring the issue. And as he stated, historic preservation is definitely a green movement and a great option. Preserving buildings is what Stanton has been doing for 30 years, and we have a great track record of that. And we're certainly recognized in the state, as well as the nation, for both our commercial and residential preservation efforts. And along with that, as in our newly revised design guidelines, we support the installation of solar and green energy methods when they are compatible with historic preservation efforts. And we definitely are in favor of that and have had, as Rodney mentioned, numerous projects approved over the past several years. And I think the important thing to remember, too, is that every application that we review is looked at on an individual basis. We review them, of course, in light of the accepted standards and our guidelines, but we review them individually. So, you know, unfortunately, there are cases where solar panels are very visible and just not appropriate. But for the most part, we do look at everything individually and have a good track record of being in favor and approving solar energy use. So thank you again, and we appreciate your interest and your consideration in all this.
Well, thank you for your service as well. We appreciate the efforts that have made our historic districts what they are today. And I know I was one, among others, who had asked for, are there alternatives? And are there any changes in the guidelines coming up? Because I thought that's the least we could do for our citizens would be to explore what options were out there. And so we have now found that, right now, we're doing all we can do. There may come a time when there's some technology advancement that makes something compatible that's also efficient. So we will just have to wait and see if or when that happens. Council members, do you have any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Kyer?
None.
Mr. Holmes?
I have none.
Ms. Oaks?
I have none. I just want to say thank you, though, for all the effort put into this.
Dr. Curran?
I'll just join in like the mayor. I was one of the people who was very interested to see if there were going to be any changes in the guidelines, if any other cities were doing anything differently, and if there were any materials that were suitable. It's good to know the latest state of affairs. I think changes could come in all those areas. And working in the industry, I know that the industry is making progress on materials. So I hope that, I'm glad we're doing what we can now, and I hope that in the future there will be more options for our citizens who have historic buildings to put solar panels up.
That's right. Thank you. Dr. Harrington?
No other comments. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And thanks to Ms. Brannick and Mr. Strassler and Mr. Rhodes for the work and the expertise that went into that.
Thank you.
Item F is a memorandum of understanding between City of Stanton and Stanton Creative Community Fund for COVID-19 Emergency Disaster Relief Loan Program benefiting Stanton businesses. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of council. Since the onset of the current crisis, council has encouraged staff to look for ways to provide relief to local citizens and businesses. And last month, you'll recall that council adopted an emergency relief ordinance that provided some measures to provide relief to folks here in the city in the areas of excise taxes and utility billing, for example. We have continued to seek avenues by which we can provide some measure of relief here in the city. And Mr. Vaughn with Economic Development has been working with the Stanton Creative Community Fund for the last 10 days or so to try to pull together a package that would result in a loan program being offered exclusively to businesses here in Stanton. And I would like to invite Mr. Vaughn to share with you details of that program for consideration.
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is Billy Vaughn. I did have a little bit more to share with you, but since the city manages to cover most of that, I'll jump right to the details of the loan program. Again, we've been working with Stanton Creative Community Fund, and at the conclusion of that effort, they were able to pull down Small Business Administration loan monies that would be earmarked just for Stanton businesses. The pool source is $100,000. Individual loans can be made with a value between $1,000 to $5,000. The interest rate is 0%, and the term of the loan would be up to three years. Also, the first payment would be deferred six months after the signing of the appropriate documents. Now, in support of this joint effort with Stanton Creative Community Fund, the city will provide funding to SCCF to cover costs associated with grant, with loan administration, technical assistance. That will cost us to be about $10,000. Also, that money will be used to help buy down the interest rate to zero. Also, as a requirement of SBA, of a small business administration, SCCF will have a loan loss reserve account. And so the city's providing funding for that in the amount of $15,000. So for the city, it will cost $25,000 to make available $100,000 for Stanton businesses. Yesterday, the Stanton Creative Community Fund ordered that and approved the establishment of this pool of money. Again, you have the MOU with your pocket, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, sir.
I will tell you that I'm pleased that you just explained that $25,000, excuse me, because it was giving me a little bit of heartburn looking at possibly 25% of the loan amount. But what I'm hearing is that there will be $100,000 to go towards funding the loans for businesses. And the $10,000 is to offset the interest rate, which I think is excellent. And then the rest of it is more or less the administration or offering technical support you mentioned. So that would be technical support to the businesses also.
Yes, helping with filling out the appropriate loan applications.
Excellent. Okay.
SCCF will also handle the promotion of the program.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, ma'am.
So the source of these funds is the Small Business Administration, not the City of Stanton, is that correct, the 100,000?
That is correct.
And so 10,000 goes towards the cost of administering, and the 15,000 is a loan loss reserve?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Yes. And in the event that that loan loss reserve is not called upon, how does that reserve get back to the city?
Those funds are returned to the city.
Okay.
Or whatever portion of those funds remain will be returned to-
Thank you.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions. First, since these funds are coming from the Small Business Administration, are these funds that businesses in Stanton would not have been able to access on their own through other relief programs administered by the Small Business Administration? Are these in addition?
You are correct. Stanton Creative Community Fund is a micro lender, and they have access to funds from SBA and other federal entities. But those funds must go through their books and then to be loaned to individuals, whether businesses or individual entrepreneurs in the city or in the region.
Okay. And then the second question is, I think some cities that are doing these emergency small business loans are making them forgivable. Did we all consider doing that? And I'm wondering why we didn't do it that way.
Again, these are funds from SBA which requires repayment. This is unlike some of the other loan pools that have been generated by other localities, where they've diverted funds from existing loan programs to a disaster relief program, and then they simply have just waived the repayment of those monies. But in this particular case, the city's not providing that $100,000. So the best that we could do is find a way to write down what SBA requires, I believe, is 2% to 3%. So the city's writing that down to zero.
And the first payment is not due for six months?
Six months, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Vaughn, this is Andrea Oaks.
Yes.
I just wanted to comment that the Community Foundation, they've also worked with the Stanton Creative Community Fund. And if you guys can hear me, I'm going to read this. $25,000, $25,000 is going to go towards the Stanton Creative Community Fund at the direction of the F and M Bank to offer loans of $1,000 to $5,000 with zero interest rate and to be paid back 50%, and then the rest of it will be forgiven by the SCCF. So that's another option out there.
Correct.
If I can note for participants, I'm communicating with Mayor Doll, who has been disconnected, and I'm contacting city staff to ask them to call her to assist her with her efforts to reconnect to the meeting. Vice Mayor Kyer, I think that we have two options. We can either wait a moment for the mayor to rejoin, or you can step in to continue the meeting.
Excuse me, I would have no problem waiting a minute or two.
Okay.
And if they can't reconnect her, then I will reconvene.
All right, this is Carol Lindoll.
We're waiting for you.
So I lost the connection totally. So have we finished the, did we entertain a motion?
We have not done the motion. We're waiting to see if you could make it back.
Well, I've made it. Mr. Kyer?
Yes?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Can anyone else hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm asking that I would entertain a motion, and I didn't hear from anyone.
You didn't hear either.
Mayor Call.
Ms. Mead?
I move that the proposed memorandum of understanding between the City of Stanton and the Stanton Creative Community Fund, providing for the establishment and administration of the Emergency Disaster Relief Loan Program for COVID-19 benefiting Stanton businesses, be approved and the city manager be authorized to execute and deliver the memorandum of understanding and such other documents as may be required in connection with the loan program with such modifications and in final form as approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
No.
If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I am back on Zoom, hopefully. So now we have matters from the city manager, Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, members of council, first, before I share with you items I have, let me suggest to those members of the public who are interested in sharing comments with council during Matters from the Public, which is next on the agenda, that they may go ahead and call to be placed in the queue to address the council. Calls will be taken once I complete Matters from the City Manager, and instructions to place the call are on the published agenda and on the city council website. So sharing with council members just a few items, I want to let you know that earlier in the week, we used the same platform to have a town hall meeting with the city workforce scattered as we are in locations throughout the city and the region. We had over 100 employees who participated in that town hall session, and it was an opportunity for us to connect with the city employee and to share with them some of the developments in the areas of human resources and budget. And so I think that that was a good exercise, and we look forward to repeating it from time to time, so long as we remain scattered as we are today. Earlier this week, I completed arrangements with the manager of the Stanton Farmers Market for a modified market beginning Saturday, April 18th. And I would direct the public to the market's website, www.stantonfarmersmarket.org, for details concerning the market, which will largely be a pickup of pre-ordered items to comply with the requirements of Governor Northam's executive order. Also, earlier this week, I extended the date of closures of city facilities and suspension of city programs, which originally was April 15th, and that date was extended to June 10th to coincide with the governor's stay-at-home order. And I would remind you and the public that as provided in the revised budget calendar, council will have a budget work session one week from tonight on Thursday, April 16th, and using this same platform, Zoom. And finally, I would like to extend my thanks to the information technology staff for their assistance in helping us get to this point. I think we suffered a minor glitch, and hopefully that's as bad as it gets, and we'll look forward to their continued support as we continue to meet in this manner for the foreseeable future. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Next would be Matters from the Public. And I would remind participants that even though the pre-recorded part on this, when you call in, talks about questions, we're here really to listen to your remarks.
Madam Mayor, it looks like we may have one speaker who's on the line. Is there a speaker there?
I was briefly here calling 1618 Delaware. In this difficult time of being unable to attend council sessions in person, and in an attempt to improve transparency of council actions, can we please improve the timing of posting the minutes of council meetings? Tonight's meeting finally approved the March 12th minutes, which are still unavailable to the general public on the city website. That meeting was four weeks ago. The last minute's visible to the public on city website is the 2/27 meeting. So, a proposal. Could the clerk of council type the minutes within 24 hours of the meeting, submit them electronically to council members for approval, and then have them posted for public viewership within a week? That would help us. Point number two. Will council please direct city manager Steve Rosenberg to print and post his plans for expense reductions being made by our city in response to the COVID-19 crisis? I can find reductions in city services on the city website, such as restrictions in park amenities and restrictions in city hall office access. But I'm unable to view any financial expenditure reductions being made despite the obvious lawsuit tax written. Are we cutting any personnel? In tonight's presentation, the only thing I see is $45,000 for suspension of pool, summer leave, and summer camp activities. All they're doing is holding that up for one month. But my question is, I saw paving being performed yesterday and today, so I imagine business as usual is occurring in Stanton. Could we have Mr. Rosenberg explain how the city is responding to the lawsuit in Oakland and what he sees as essential versus non-essential city services during this volatile period? Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I don't see any other speakers who are waiting. There may be one speaker on the line now.
Is the next caller ready to speak?
I think that's it, Madam Mayor. I don't think that there is another caller at the present time.
All right. Well, with no further callers and no further business, this meeting is adjourned.